All right, it's seven o'clock and I want to call the meeting to order. If everybody could stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion on it? Are we good? All right. All in favor of it? Okay. Paul, I can't see him. But that's all right. Any public input and announcements? I don't have any. Do you have any?
Nope, none.
Do I have an approval of the minutes from December 6th?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any changes, spellings, discussion? He's not here. All right, all in favor?
I see three hands, yep.
Do you? Okay, I abstain. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're on to bus bids?
Yep. So something we were talking about this fall, we have been, last year we purchased a used bus because we were told that the timeline to actually get a bus was pretty darn long. So this year, we started looking early to try and solicit some bids for buses. Typically, we have leases in our budget for two buses under a seven-year municipal lease. That's currently in our budget now, but we may not actually be able to use that this year because what we're being told is we are likely going to receive buses over the summer. So there's a small chance that if we get a bus delivered in June, we're fine. We start the lease this year's budget. If we don't in June and we get it in July, we would start the lease under next year's budget. Just so you know the timing of that and then what we're looking at. We did get two bids back from the three groups that we typically hear from when we try to solicit bids. One came in a little bit lower than the other and actually, the Transportation Department recommendation is to go with them also because they have a really good reputation in the local area and they work with some local folks whenever we have warranty issues or things like that. If we need to send the bus into the shop, it's a lot easier. We've purchased from them before, so that's the recommendation. So Transportation Department is looking for a motion to approve the bid to contract with W.C. Cressy &amp; Son to purchase two new buses on a seven-year municipal lease.
Are we replacing buses?
We make the, we gotta make the motion first.
Yeah, well, let's get to discussion, sorry.
I'll make that motion of accepting the bid from W.C. Cressy &amp; Son.
I'll second it.
Okay, now are we replacing?
So the plan would be if we enter into a lease for two new buses, we would be getting rid of two buses in our fleet. So we've got fourteen-
Do we have a couple old ones?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We have 14 buses, actually, because at any given moment in time, we might have three that need repairs. So we talked a little bit at our last, I think, finance meeting about that. I don't know if we talked at the full board meeting, but there were some questions around, well, what is, what is actually the goal? So the goal would be if we're getting two new buses a year, then we have, by the time that seven-year lease is up, we get into a really good cycle where it's a known cost replacing two every year if you want a fleet of about 10 that is really current. And that's been the goal. Yep, Len?
You're muted.
Yep.
Go ahead, Brian. I want you to finish first.
Okay, okay. So the goal would be, because we're a little bit behind on that. When COVID hit, we didn't buy buses, I think, for two years. And then last year would have been that third year and we only bought one bus. So we're behind that schedule. So we have some aging buses that are in and out of the shop more than they should be and it makes us a little bit nervous. We're, we're proposing to get back on schedule, not by trying to jump-start that cycle, but just get back into the cycle of two, two a year. And eventually, we'll get down the road and we'll be back on that two-a-year cycle. We've done it long enough and we've got a fairly reasonable fleet. We might not be holding on to 14 buses at that point in time. If our fleet is a little more updated, you would hope that you don't need so many backups. But where we are right now, we, we got rid of, I think, two buses last year we got rid of because they really were at the end of their life. But I don't think we want to get rid of any yet, just because we may need them when something goes into the shop, if that makes sense. Len?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The $132,907-
Yeah.
Is that per year or is that-
Oh, yeah, great question. No, that is the total cost for the bus. Yeah.
Over the seven years?
Yes. The, the lease price is going to be something more like, I think, $17,000 to $19,000 a year. And when you look at two buses, you know, we had been talking about $30,000 being enough of a lease to cover two buses. Prices have gone up and actually, it looks like it's going to be more like $40,000 a year to cover the lease price for two buses. Yeah, prices definitely did go up. We were, we were a little surprised, not too surprised, but we were a little surprised when we got the numbers back.
Yeah, because last year, it was not this much.
Yep. You, you have something else, Len, or?
Yeah, what are we doing with the old buses? I mean, are we selling them?
Yes, we sold those last year. So we were able to get what we could out of that, yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep, Nick?
Two questions. One, do these have seatbelts and-
No, these don't.
And two, have we, not that it matters from a driver's standpoint, because anything over 12 passengers doesn't matter, but have we considered looking at smaller buses?
I think the challenge, and you know, we can, we can talk with Connie about this, but I think we're seeing more often than not, we're packing the bus. Because if we're doing a consolidated route, we're down a driver and we're, so it may seem kind of crazy because some days around here, you see a bus with 10 kids.
I forgot, I forgot about that.
No, 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 fair, fair point. You know, there are days where you see a bus with 10 kids on it, but then there are days when you see a bus with 70 kids on it. And we had talked a lot-
Yeah, sports events, you're going to pack the bus.
We, we had talked a lot about vans and hey, maybe we don't buy a bus and we get a couple more vans, right when we had first got the two. And Stan could maybe jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the sense that I get is anytime we have that conversation, we kind of go, yeah, but we're not using vans as much as we thought we were going to use them. Trying to find a driver for those vans, we were, we were also thinking, well, gosh, if you had three or four vans, it would be easier to find maybe three or four van drivers, right, versus a bus driver? We have not found that to be the case. Even though you don't need a CDL, it's part-time work. And it's, it's part-time work that's a split schedule. So you might drive in the morning, you might drive in the afternoon. And I think it's hard to, hard to find those folks. Thinking, hey, is there somebody who works in the building during the day who would like to start their day and end their day doing that? We haven't seen anybody really want to do that. So hiring externally, hard because it's split shift and part-time. I mean, we pay, we pay, I think, competitive rate to drive the van, $25 an hour to drive the van, but you know, we, we struggle to find people to do that. So I, I, I think that's a lot of information, Nick. So again, while you might see a bus with 10 kids on it, we're not finding two van drivers and sometimes we got to consolidate. So I do, I think, for a little bit longer at least, we need to keep our fleet current.
So I remember last year when we were talking about the buses. Do they have backup cameras on these and what about the front?
Every bus we buy is going to have cameras.
Okay, because I know our old ones don't.
These come with three cameras.
Okay.
So there are cameras that are going to be watching the inside of the bus to try and support, you know, positive behavior on the bus and support the driver. And there are cameras on the outside, too, as far as safety goes. If there were ever an incident and we needed to try and figure out, you know, was, was the arm out when somebody drove past or something like that?
Because I know that was a big thing last year when we were looking at.
Yes, every single bus is going to have cameras that we order from here on out. That's a great question.
So is there an option to get buses with seatbelts? And I only bring this up because I know it has been brought to my attention by a couple of community members that are, that's one of their, their wishes and hopes is that we would get buses with seatbelts on them.
We can, we can order them and of course, they'll, the company will do almost anything for us that we ask for. If we did that, my, my bet would be that we wouldn't get it in the summer. Because what they were telling us actually was, we can have a current bus and we can retrofit some of the options you want on a currently in manufacture bus and you can get it this summer. I don't know that, you know, adding cameras might be a lot easier than adding seatbelts. So there's a potential that if we ordered with seatbelts, we wouldn't get it before the year starts. The other thing that I think, we, we look to the Department of Transportation guidelines. And the Department of Transportation guidelines for the state don't tell us that we should have seatbelts. There's, you know, you can, you can find studies and research to back up, you know, that they are safe and that they aren't safe. And that's tricky. So we, we do look to the Department of Transportation to make sure that we're doing what we should be to keep kids safe.
I think it's also like, thinking about enforcement of wearing seatbelts. Like, you know, in our cars, it's pretty easy, but like, you know.
When you have a full bus and there's one bus driver with no aide or whatever, yeah, it's difficult.
And, and we do want our kids to be safe, we absolutely do. And it gets tricky when there are different opinions about what does make that bus safe.
And how many buses do we run each day?
Eight if we are fully staffed for that day, eight. Great questions.
So I guess it's, I don't know. So all in favor of purchasing two buses? From W.C. Cressy &amp; Son?
I see three on the screen, yep, okay. Excellent, thank you, everybody.
Okay, next is our basketball hoops.
And I think there'll be a little bit more conversation around this when we get to the B&amp;G update. So I'll just say this was part of the B&amp;G meeting conversation. And I think we put that in the bid letter, basketball bids. So B&amp;G committee has already reviewed this and, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, this was a proposal that B&amp;G said, let's bring this to the full board?
Yeah, so basically-
I'll pause you on discussion.
Oh, yes.
So we would ask for a motion to contract with Tri-State Folding Partitions for a new basketball hoop net set up for the gym at Mill River.
The main gym.
I was just going to ask for clarification.
I already had you, Nick.
I will make the motion that we, is it's a bid? Accept the bid through Tri-State Folding Partitions for the basketball net in the main gym?
Is it, sorry?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is it two hoops or one?
One, I believe.
One hoop?
It's all, it's all the, all, every basket, every basketball hoop in the main gym.
Oh, it's all of them?
So what happened exactly?
I knew there was one that was problematic.
So one is very full. So Len, do you want to ask your question or do you want me to say what we talked about in building ground? You're muted, so I don't know what you're saying.
I know what I'm saying.
Now we do.
It says, for your consideration, we have quotes for work to replace a baseball net in the main gym at Mill River.
Yeah, that's definitely a typo.
Oh, yeah!
It's definitely not baseball. So that's definitely typo.
It should be multiples.
Yep.
So I, I would just suggest that you change it to basketball nets.
Yeah, and why don't we-
Nets.
Are folks comfortable with amending our motion to be, accept the recommendation to contract with Tri-State Folding Partitions to replace the basketball nets in the main gym?
So you would need Josh to rescind.
I think, if we're, if we're amending it, can't we just all agree to amend it?
You can.
Yep, I agree.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So-
Okay, can't, we have discussion, I'm itching, sorry.
We're there, we're there.
Okay, so what happened to our six hoops?
Well, Paul, do you want to, you had your-
Yeah, I'll chime in here. The issue is, it's really a safety issue. It's the, it's the cabling, the pulley system, all the supports that are, you know, in danger of failing and if they did-
Yeah, we don't want that.
Have the whole kit and caboodle come into the floor and somebody can get injured, so.
They're on, they're automatic, right? They're on a control button?
There's a system that's in place-
There is, yes.
And then there's supposed to be a safety mechanism that if it fails, it gets caught. Right now, so the guy who comes, comes from New York and does an inspection on our bleachers, on our hoops, all, and everywhere, all of the schools need work done. The ones in the main gym are actively dangerous right now.
Okay.
And I think to the point where there's, there's at least one that can no longer be actually used because some of the, the metal cabling is frayed or snapped. And you know, when you look at that, you worry a lot about, well, when's the next one going to go to? And that's a liability.
And the other part about this bid in particular is that it is time-based. Where it was like, this person, who is the guy who comes and does it, is like, if you can do this and get approval by this time, I can come up and do it at this price. If you don't do it right now, you, you have to look at this other price or higher than that.
And is it true that he can come, like, relative, like, he can be here like the 27th or something?
Yeah, it's supposed, I don't know the dates, but it was like a very quick, it was a quick turnaround. Paul, do you remember what he, what it was?
I don't exactly remember the date, but it was a question of them scheduling the work or having to come on an emergency basis and that would be quite a bit of difference for us.
And so for like-
If we waited for something to be more problematic and needed it immediately fixed, then we'd be paying a lot more.
Right, and this specific bid is like, we have, when they, when this guy comes up and does the inspections, we have problems in all of the gyms and all of the schools. And this one was like, let's get this one done and then we have this other bulk money that potentially, we can be putting towards fixing the other ones that aren't as timed up.
So to clarify the bid, because the way it's worded at the moment isn't the best.
It's for one, yeah.
It says to, we have quotes to work and replace, obviously, basketballs, or baseball's wrong. It should say basketball. And it's not a net.
It's the hoop.
It's, it's the whole structure, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not 100% clear if it is the whole structure or if it is just the mechanisms that, you know, support the structure.
And it is on one of the six or it's on all six in the main?
It's all six.
Yeah, the main gym one gets fixed, yeah.
That was what I was trying to get at. All six need to have the lowering safety mechanism replaced.
Yeah.
And that's at that price?
At that price, the $17,450.
So it's not for one, it's for six, and it's not for nets, it's for the systems?
Yes. Yeah, because if we were just doing baseball or basketball nets, they're a hell of a lot cheaper than that.
Yeah.
I'm with you, I'll go do it myself.
I got, exactly, okay.
I'll go get a ladder from my garage and do it this afternoon.
Well, no, because there's a game going on right now. But, okay. That clarifies all of it, so I guess, with the amended version that we have said, that hopefully-
I kind of, yeah, I kind of want to ask a question. So on that, if, you know, they're sitting there and they're saying, you know, it's not at all safe, how are we playing basketball games?
So the one that is the most problematic is not in use. I don't think it can be in use. Yeah, I mean, that's the question, are they actively playing on, on, you know, they're taking bank shots off of something that could fall down?
So we know which ones cannot be lowered, like, they're just going to stay up there, not going to be touched until, okay.
Yeah, no, absolutely, no. Kim is, Kim is incredibly aware of exactly what the problem is and which ones. And this is something that actually, I think, has been somewhat known for a little while, it's just-
Yeah, the conversation that we had was that there are certain things in buildings that were being put on the burner until, and, because they could be easily avoided.
There's, there's a lot that hasn't been done that needs to be done. So this isn't something that popped up last month. This is something that's been, people have been keeping an eye on it for a while and we're pretty nervous and we should do something about it. And it was a perfect opportunity, buildings and grounds, sitting down and going, let's look at all the things across the district that we might need to address, you know. Now that we have a five-year plan, we can start having those conversations and we can start setting what are the priorities and we can start addressing those things that have been pushed off to the side for many years, where we just haven't, that work hasn't really been done for a while. So now it's time to do that work and this was the first one that we go, this needs to be a priority.
Okay. So I'm going to do a recap again, sorry, Nick.
I like recaps.
Okay. So it's going to read, and we already have a motion, this is all discussion. For your consideration, we have quotes for work to replace six basketball hoop mechanical systems in the main gym of Mill River.
I like it.
And then Tri-State Folding, okay. Do we have a motion? Or not, we already have? Can I have a vote, please? Len, are you voting?
They, they might be voting after you-
All those in favor?
Yeah.
All those in favor, sorry.
Okay.
I got to read you my game.
I see three.
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Now it's unanimous, okay.
Yes, unanimous.
But I want a baseball net.
I will go buy you one, I might have one in my attic.
You, you have space under your tree for one more present, Len, we'll make that happen.
Well, they actually have a huge baseball net.
They do?
Oh, for pitching practice?
I have one in my attic, I'll bring it over to your house.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
And yeah, we'll talk more when we get to B&amp;G, too. So good, good conversation to come.
Okay, so moving right along, financial management review questionnaire. Assuming that's you, Brian.
Yep. Stan, I can go through this if you want me to. Stan's a little under the weather, though he's here. Stan, you can cut me off and dive in if you want. This is something that-
Please stay in your office, Stan.
Oh, he's at, I think he's at home, actually.
Oh, is he? Okay.
Which, Stan's always here, so that tells you something. This is something we do annually, oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, I can just give a quick overview. This is required for the business, our central office, we say management review questionnaires to the board in months a year. This is at a time of the year for us to present it to you. It basically, you know, it's all basically financial functions that happen on a daily basis in the office and how, how each functioning and who has responsibility for. What we try to do with these functions is to, is to, you know, separation of duties once, you know, the employees in the office. Obviously, it's not a very big office, we have, you know, basically three full-time people in the office, but we do a pretty decent job of trying to keep things, you know, separate in regards to cash collection, cash payments and other, and check authorization signings. One strong point that we don't, that we, that we do have, you know, in the district is that, you know, nobody in the office, really nobody in the building has, you know, can sign checks as done by our treasurer. So there is a very strong internal control thing there. You know, we got people doing separate, you know, entry payables, also, you know, people collecting mail, collecting cash and posting them to the accounts and bringing them to the bank. And we asked how the person that does the bank account installation separately from all those other functions. So in a nutshell, that's, you know, basically what that financial questionnaire is, is show you what, what you do and who's responsible for it. I don't know if you have any questions?
I'm just glad that they're concerned if you have regular vacations or not.
But I need to give you-
To the islands.
It's the people in my office, you got to tell them to take a vacation.
Yeah. It's just one of the questions.
And do we have to make a motion on this or?
Yes.
Basically, the, the board chair just needs to, needs to sign it to show that it was presented to all of the board and all the board had a chance to review it.
So, motion to authorize board chair to sign this document.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Do we have any more discussion on it?
There is only one that I had a question on. There's a section that says, have school board members attended financial training? And it's, it's not required, but for our board training sessions, is that a topic that we would like to entertain in the future?
Where are you seeing that?
Oh, that's-
Bottom of page one.
Yeah. No column near the bottom of the first page.
Oh, okay.
And Stan, when they're talking about financial training, they're talking about, not necessarily like budget, big picture, they're talking more about payroll accounts payable, that kind of training, is that?
I think there's more or less talking when it comes to the board, it probably is more along the lines of, you know, budgeting, you know, basic knowledge of how things are funded and what the requirements are and what, you know, basically what, what's, what's their requirements under the laws, what their responsibility as a board member, you know, based in going, what? You know, in case of like procurement, that everybody's familiar with the procurement law and Vermont, that, you know, that anything over $40,000 needs to be approved by them. You know, if they see an invoice or check coming through that's more than 40 and they don't recall, you know, that ever being approved by them, that's something that, you know, they should be knowledgeable about, actually, and knowing, you know, that they may have a problem within the, you know, internal, internal control structure of the district if those types of things are slipping through.
No, that's helpful. Yeah, so there are some things we could share with you that are some, some bullet points of things you should know so that when you're reviewing financials, you know, when we get to the, near the end of the board meeting and we've got pay orders, you know, do you, do you always know what you're looking at when you see those?
I know the VSBA does a fantastic job and they have webinars and they have things you can listen to, but obviously, within our own district, there's probably one of those times when we go, hey, we have a 30-minute meeting where we can do training.
Yeah.
Is this a topic where we can say, hey, let's focus it on-
Or even if we have a late agenda?
And if this is-
Stick it in there for 10 minutes.
And if this is something folks want to do, this is actually a place where I don't know that I'd plug into VSBA resources. I think those are going to be too big picture. I'd say we'll, we'll put something together internally for you. That'll be, here are the things you need to know so that if you saw something, you'd, you'd know if it were a red flag or not, as we're sorting through financial data. But yeah, we can do that if the board wants to schedule it sometime.
And I'm not, I'm not saying we do or don't, I'm just putting it as a note of interest.
Yeah, we could do that, yep. Yeah, file that away until somebody wants to do that and we'll put something together.
All right.
All those in favor?
That's, yeah. Sorry, migraine so bad. All those in favor of the board chair signing this document?
Three hands on the screen?
Okay, thank you. Okay, Stafford update, please.
Oh, that's me. Our Stafford individuals are having a fantastic- Oh, that's me. Uh, our Stafford individuals are having a fantastic time. Uh, in round numbers, we have thirty-three individuals. Approximately thirty-five percent of them are seniors. Uh, the seniors, they have the opportunity to go out and job shadow or actually work every day. Uh, and they're super excited about that. Um, like most students this time of year, they're actually looking forward to vacation. Um, and then they'll be coming back for the second half of the year, which is great. Questions?
Do they, when you're in, do you do like, if you're thinking about wanting to go to Stafford, is there a time period where like, so do you have to, do you get to go toward it middle school? What if you, like, after a certain period in high school, do you, can you start going to it? Or do you have to start at a certain?
So they, sorry, Nick, but my son is doing this right now. Ninth grade, you get the op, no, what the hell? He's in tenth. Ninth grade, you get the option to go visit. Tenth grade, you get an option to go visit. You also select your places that you want to visit. This year, what they did was you got two choices and then they gave you a mystery one. So like my son wants to do forestry and construction. So he did those two and then his mystery one was culinary. After that, you are then scheduled to meet with the guidance counselor to go over the enrollment forms and the application. Then you have a date to get that in by and then depending on what program, you're a one or two year. Um, I guess what's happening now is some of the kids that are signing up for construction and forestry may do one-year construction and one-year forestry to get the background of all of it. Because there's the plumbing and heating and.
Full, full lifecycle.
Yes. Um, so ninth grade, they kind of start talking about it.
I was gonna say, there are some sophomores that get accepted, but I think it really depends on.
Your grades and like, yeah.
Which is so different than it used to be.
Yeah, and they've, they've done in the past middle school visits where Stafford will come and present here.
They do it like the job fair stuff.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they've also, they talked a little bit about doing summer camps. So sometimes they'll have a summer camp where students engage in the summer camp before they get to Stafford age. And that's what supports students kind of knowing what they're interested in and wanting to sign up for too. So there are a couple of, couple of ways students can engage with what's going on out there to get an idea. The, the only thing that, that we wish, and I know Stafford wishes this too, is that they could serve every single kid that put in an application.
Oh, my God, there is.
Everybody would love that, but that's tough to, tough to do.
They unfortunately have to turn away probably fifty percent of their applicants, just because of.
Especially for certain programs, right?
Especially for certain programs because they have size constraints, so.
So like I know that engineering program at Stafford is, you have, it's a strict guideline and they literally maybe accept, accept a quarter of them. You know, like four, what was, I think last year was like four hundred kids applied or something and they only accepted like a hundred and fifty or something like that. So yeah, it's pretty, you're, and but you're exposed. I mean, the kids are exposed right along and know about it and stuff, so.
So back like twenty years ago, you used to have your kind of core, uh, you know, whatever technical training thing you were working on, but then you did like math and English in the high school?
They actually do it at Rutland now.
Okay.
So I know.
Depends on the class.
It depends on what classes you need.
Yeah, I was wondering if there's kids coming from Mill River, are they doing math here in Mill River?
So.
Generally, no, their schedule doesn't really support it.
Right, right.
You know, we, we did a lot of work regionally this year to, and I know Len's got something he's gonna chime in. We did a lot of work regionally to support a common starting time because, you know, you go back a year or two and it would be, sometimes kids get in at nine, sometimes kids get in at ten and it, that's really challenging for Stafford to run a solid program. If kids are going to go in. So with that, with that schedule adjustment, we don't have a ton of time for students here. What we tend to do is we tend to provide not, uh, not your academic courses here, but we provide services. So there might be guidance services or there might be I E P services that work really well and we can be flexible and serve them at the beginning or end of the day, but typically you're not taking a math class here and then going to Stafford.
Because most of the time they're leaving halfway through their first block.
Let's not forget Len.
I'm gonna defer to Len in a second, but a lot of the programs are now developed to where it's completely vertically integrated. Um, so for electrical plumbing, they're getting all of their math aptitude in program.
Good.
Okay. Len?
Yeah, so they, there might be a tech credit and a math credit to make that class.
Sure, steel by thunder.
Oh, sorry, Len.
Well, no, no, no.
Sorry.
Because in a lot of the classes up in the tech center, those, the math, the English and, and those kinds of courses are, or credits are embedded in the program that they're taking. I know years ago, um, we used to offer at Mill River a American history course in the morning. That's what they took before they went to Stafford. Now I don't know if they still do that or not. But, but Stafford, I think, has done a great job of embedding in their courses that they offer the math and science materials that the kids need in order to get credits in order to graduate.
Oh, so I think English is the one that you usually, like, I went to Stafford and it was English was the only thing not embedded in my class. I had to take a, an English class at Rutland. But everything else, and then here you were required to take senior law your senior year and that was the only class in the morning.
It was in the last senior law class, I remember.
Yep.
So it's, it's, I like how it's all embedded because it just, for the kids who can't sit in a classroom, it's, it's perfect.
Well, and it's also like, this is, because, you know, it's always like, well, when am I ever gonna use this? And you're like, well, you better learn to do this if you're gonna try to do all those calculations and all sorts of stuff.
Anything else you wanna update us on?
Any other questions?
When's the next meeting?
It would have been the first Wednesday in January, but they just canceled that one since it was like gonna be the first day of school.
Okay.
It will be the first meeting in February, or the first Wednesday in February.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, on to budget.
Okay, so the big item on our agenda tonight, budget. We had our last finance meeting on Wednesday of last week, so a week ago today. And we sent a bunch of budget materials to you. I am gonna start by thanking the finance committee for being so flexible and scheduling so many meetings. There are, there are dry spells in finance, like the summer, but then it gets to be busy season and the more we can meet in that busy season period of time, the better because we can have conversations, we can go, we can go back and we can think and we can check on things and then we can come back and continue the conversation. And I think that process is important. So thanks to the finance committee for showing up and doing that. Uh, first document I'm gonna refer to is the budget overview, so ten A, the F Y twenty-five budget overview. That gives just the background of what we actually did a little bit last year and what we did this year to build a budget. So how did we actually get to this proposal? As we did last year, we went with principals, department heads, and we sorted through, what do you think we need? What do you think we can do without? Last year, we had already kind of figured out there wasn't much we could do without. We had our, we had our two budget forums as well and had some folks show up from the community, from the staff, to share with us their thoughts there. All under this interesting year of Act one twenty-seven and pupil weighting changing. That's what we spent the most time as a full board talking about when we had our Clarendon meeting in the fall. The implications of Act one twenty-seven and how they put some guardrails in that we were gonna try to follow. At that point in time, we talked a lot about this five percent tax rate threshold. That worst-case scenario, our district tax rate would not go beyond a five percent increase because there were some built-in protections. Now that we've seen the yield number from December first and now that we've seen our, here comes a big one, long-term weighted average daily membership number. Those are the two big variables that we needed to know. Uh, we're in, we're in pretty good shape. Uh, we are looking, and I think this is a big number to pay attention to. We are looking at a point nine-nine percent district tax rate increase. So when you talk about what is our district doing that is impacting taxes in our local communities, we're talking about a roughly one percent increase in the tax rate. Even though we have so many factors that we're trying to wrestle with, like, and most of these out of our control. A healthcare increase of sixteen point four percent, um, which last year was a twelve point seven percent increase. Uh, Len had been asking us, hey, can you put dollars behind those numbers? So I added that in here. What does a sixteen point four percent healthcare increase actually mean for our district? That means an increase to the tune of six hundred thousand dollars. If you look actually at all of the insurances and benefits, so these are things that we don't necessarily get, uh, we don't, the state has negotiated healthcare, for example, so we can't change those healthcare plans. We can't go to our local union and negotiate that anymore. So if a healthcare increase comes down the line, that's completely out of our control. If you look at other insurances and retirement benefits, that's about eight hundred thousand dollars that we, we just roll into budget season going, there's gonna be an eight hundred thousand dollar increase to our budget and we can't do anything about it. Even with that, we have a district tax rate that's gonna increase roughly one percent, which I think is, is a great outcome when we've asked for a couple of things in the budget to better support our schools, our students, our communities. So some of those additions that we've got in there. There is a one-point-oh F T E support staff at Clarendon that was grant-funded through pandemic S R grant funds. We had about five of those grant-funded positions. This is the one, only one that we're asking to go into the local budget. We were, we tried to be mindful of spending that money in a way that we weren't gonna have a fiscal cliff when the grant funding disappeared. This is the one ask into the local budget from that. We heard a lot from the community. We heard from some teachers, students and caregivers about a world language teacher. So we discussed adding a world language teacher, one-point-oh F T E who would serve our elementary schools. So this would be a split position, somebody who would go around to our elementary schools and provide that service. A alternative program teacher for Mill River. Uh, that would be somebody who carries a, a load of classes that look, that might look like a lot of other teachers in the building. Every period of the day, they would be meeting with students and supporting those students. But they would be, be working on alternative programming for those students. So these would be students who are struggling in other classes and need, need support to be able to engage in the curriculum and do that work. So this would be a, a teacher in a classroom serving students. It just wouldn't be, here's a science teacher teaching science. This would be an alternative program teacher uh, supporting any of the students that needed support. Uh, curriculum, we've talked at the board level a lot about curriculum. You've had some presentations from teachers where they're talking about the new programs they're using. Bookworms, Eureka Math, T C I for social studies. Uh, and, and, did I say Eureka Math already? Mystery Science is the one I'm looking for. So those four core subject areas. You know, we've heard from folks, while there are lots of things to worry about when we're supporting our students, academics still matter. And we wanna be focusing on students and supporting them to be able to access those academics, absolutely. There's a lot of work to be done before students access those, but if we're not giving our teachers the resources, then we can't expect us to make progress in those academic areas. So twenty-six thousand dollars would sustain that work that we've been doing. Uh, we've tried to do a lot of that work with grant funding. And we've, we've made a lot of one-time purchases with grant funding that were much larger than this twenty-six thousand dollars, but this twenty-six thousand dollars would help us sustain that investment that we've, we've put in. Uh, technology, B J has, had shared with the board last year, looking at a plan for technology. Really, the largest driver of that increase is device replacement schedule. If we want to replace our students' one-to-one devices every four years, we need to add to our budget. To give you some context, probably about six or seven years ago, we made it about an eighty thousand dollar cut in technology. Um, and that was from a device line. So in the past, there were some large cuts that we made and we were really working with a razor-thin budget. And if we really do wanna be one-to-one and, and replace those devices every four years, that's what it would take.
So are those devices meaning the Chromebooks?
Chromebooks, yep.
That the kids use?
Yep.
Okay.
Twenty thousand dollar general increases in supply and activity lines, you know, supplies cost more. If you're going on a field trip, everything costs a little bit more. That's, that's district-wide. So if we look everywhere at everything we're doing, twenty thousand dollars accounts for that increase in costs. Two new bus leases is again in there. We'll have to add that every year for several years because a seven-year lease, if we added it last year, it's gotta stay in and then we've gotta add a new lease line. So we're gonna have to do that a couple of years in a row to get back on track. Uh, after-school program, uh, we've been doing a good job of supporting the after-school program locally. Uh, we've had, we have had some grant funding in the past several years that came out of pandemic S R funding too. Uh, to completely fund our after-school program at the level that it's at right now, going into next year, we've got about a twenty thousand dollar deficit. So we have to, we have to fund that if we wanna maintain after-school programs the way they are now. Okay, that's a lot of information. This is, we'll still consider this part of my presentation, so no, no question on the table yet. Does anybody have questions, comments, thoughts about that so far? And, and what if we stick to clarifying questions right now? And we'll have discussion when we have a budget question on the table. Is that reasonable? Any clarifying questions? Anything I've said so far not makes sense or not clear?
Um.
I'll save mine for discussion.
Yeah, no, fair enough, fair enough.
I have one, but I don't know where it would.
Okay, hold, hold on to it then.
Okay. Remind me I have it.
I'm on second page of that document, other considerations. This had been shared with the full board too. We had talked about this strategy of weaning ourselves off of a reliance on surplus funds. And the finance committee had agreed that, that instead of, let's just use our surplus funds while we have them, let's keep taxes as low as possible and then someday they'll be gone and taxes will jump up. Uh, the finance committee didn't like that idea. Uh, and the finance committee would prefer that we slowly back out of using surplus. The last several years, we had used seven hundred thousand in surplus, so we're looking at six hundred thousand. Next year, we'd look at maybe four hundred thousand, then two hundred. So we would slowly ease off of using that to pay taxes down. If we've got a one percent increase in our district tax rate, it does seem like this is a good year that where, uh, we can not use quite as much surplus and there's not a huge tax swing. That's the goal. Every year, we don't want a huge tax swing. There's gonna be a small increase due to that, uh, but that's the, that's the plan. The other piece of that too is that if we're using less surplus to pay down taxes, we can put a little more in our building fund. Well, we were just talking about using our building funds to replace the security sys, uh, safety systems on our basketball hoops and nets apparatus in the gym. There are a lot of other things on that five-year plan and we don't have the funding in the building fund to pay for all of them. So, uh, we also discussed the finance committee that we would put three hundred thousand of current surplus into that fund. Last year, we did unanticipated surplus, uh, which means you have to wait to see if you have it and your auditors have to go through all your records and it takes a long time for that funding to become available. We have a lot of surplus sitting around, so we can use current surplus. And if we, if we put on the ballot this year, current surplus, that funding, we get to use thirty days after a, a yes vote on the budget. So we get to turn around and use that funding a little faster to support our building needs if that's. if that's really what we want to earmark that money for. To give you an idea what that timeline looks like, the 250,000 that we approved on the ballot last year, we still can't use. So it does drag out for a long time sometimes, so we're proposing 300,000 of current surplus, which we have. Then if there's unanticipated surplus, it would go into the current surplus bucket the next year around. So it, it's just a question of when are you taking the money, if that makes sense? And are you guaranteed that it's going to be 300,000? Because if you only had an unanticipated surplus of 200,000 next year, you would have only funded your building fund 200,000. So we have to wait and see, hey, did we actually save that much? If that makes sense.
Can I ask a clarifying question about that?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so there was, so last year, 250 of unanticipated?
Yeah.
And that could just, so if we vote for this 300,000?
Yes.
That 250 could also show up? Is that what you're saying?
The 250,000 will be in our building fund once we have our audit cleared.
Okay.
It's just waiting for the audit to clear. The 300,000 of, of current funds that already is already cleared, we can move it immediate, well, 30 days after a yes vote.
Okay, so it might look more like an additional 550?
Yes, we, we, and we've been waiting to spend that 250, so we're, we're ready to use that when it gets here, but we don't want to wait again.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would, that would accelerate how we can get through our five-year plan. It doesn't, it doesn't quite give us the money to get through everything on our five-year plan yet, but it helps us do the work a little faster and kind of play catch-up a little bit. So, yeah, good question, Stephen.
And it's also, it's, if you then, it's set, it sets it up so that if you continue to have some, an amount of surplus that exists, it is a known quantity when the voters are saying, this is what you can do, and it's a known quantity for us, versus the unknown quantity, which is what has been, been voted on.
And, and, part, part of, part of where we are right now is we're sitting on surplus, and we're relying on that surplus to pay taxes down. And we really shouldn't be sitting on surplus. And we should be budgeting, you know, there are a lot of reasons why that surplus is there. The pandemic did some really funny things. It's not that, it's not that we, you know, did anything intentionally to create that surplus. So you have positions in the budget, and you can't hire those positions. Well, that turns into surplus if you can't hire somebody, because you had budgeted it. So there are a lot of interesting things coming out of the pandemic that have created this surplus. Well, in a normal budget, what you would like to think is, well, we really don't have surplus, so it's always unanticipated. We don't, you know, we don't have surplus in the bank, so usually the standard practice would be, well, whatever's unanticipated, we'll put in the building fund. But here, we find ourselves in a scenario where we do have this money, and there's not a lot you can do with surplus money. There's not, your options are not, we can't just locally say, oh, great, we have money, let's spend it however we want. Paying down our taxes as part of the budget process, or going to the voters and getting their approval to put it in a building fund. Really, we have to get voter approval to use it. So putting it in the building fund with voter approval is, I think, our best strategy for how to, how to do that. Someday, we get to the point where we don't have surplus in the bank, so we're always just looking for the unanticipated. But we find ourselves in a position where we can move a little faster, so why shouldn't we move a little faster? So that 0.99% increase, I think, is an important one to keep in mind. The other thing to keep in mind is our per-student increase is only 6.66% from last year. Last year on our ballot, we had a 14% increase in student spending. So this year, we're looking at a far lower number for an increase in student, per-student spending, 6.66%, and a tax, and a district tax rate projected to be, you know, 0.99% higher. I think great work that our, our folks have done to try and get to this point where we are supporting our schools, our students, our communities, and we're being mindful, too, of, well, what's the impact? You know, this was a reasonable year to make some strategic additions that are going to better support students, to start backing off of how we're relying on surplus money, and to fund our building fund a little bit better. So I think we've got three really good, three really good things in front of us. And what the finance committee has voted on bringing to the full board is a proposal and ballot language, tentative draft ballot language is, is at the end of this document that I'm looking at, the overview document. All the way at the end of that, we would ask for a motion to adopt the FY25 budget as presented to bring to voters on town meeting day. So quick summary of what does that mean? That means our overall expenditure budget of $21,333,576. So that number, our overall expenditure budget, which the impacts of that would be the 6.66% increase in per-student spending, the 0.99% increase in district tax rate. So that's one thing that's part of that. The second thing is that we authorize the district to transfer current surplus funds to the building sinking fund in the amount of $300,000. So overall expenditure budget and the $300,000 of current surplus going into the sinking fund. So we would entertain a motion for that, and then I'm sure we'll have a very healthy discussion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the FY25 budget as presented in the language we see there.
I'll second it. Okay, discussion.
Ah, discussion.
I've got a question.
Yep.
You first, because you won't lose it.
I've been holding on to it here. Okay, so the positions that were funded by Essar funds?
Yes.
That we are now trying to engulf into the budget?
Yes.
Do any of them, in making them go into the budget, does it mean that we're losing positions, or we're still trying to fund additional positions besides the ones listed with Essar funds?
So there's only one Essar fund position that we're trying to retain?
Yes.
Yep, there, there will be some positions.
But we have some other positions that are budget.
Yeah, there will be some positions that we don't, we have folks that have signed one-year, one-year contracts, because they were grant-funded, and they knew that those were any one-year grant-funded positions.
Okay.
This is the only one of those grant-funded positions.
The only one that we're trying to.
The other two are new positions.
At a local budget.
Yes.
And there are some Essar-funded positions that we found other grants to cover. So there are some positions, but this is the only one that's got a local budget impact.
And it's the one that we heard in Clarendon, we heard Jane talk about it, to be the, the home outreach.
Yep.
Yep. So we're not cutting positions, we're just refunding them.
And, but there will be some one-year grant-funded positions that folks, folks signed the contract knowing that that was a one-year.
Okay. Yeah, and not, those weren't the ones I was talking about.
Okay, fair enough.
But there are no staff cuts?
No staff.
No, not at all.
Not at all.
Just redirecting.
Yeah, no, and that's good, good to point that out, because I didn't explicitly say that, no, there are no cuts in staff in this budget.
And that's what I was trying to.
I'm going to ask a similar question. We have open positions listed.
Yeah.
Are those accounted for in the budget?
I would call that a cut. If we had, just to clarify, if, so I think what you're saying is, say we're down three para educators, are those openings that we can't fill in this budget? Yes. If they weren't, I'd say we were cutting three paras. Does that make sense?
And there's like, like, because there's like $250,000 probably from like special education teacher that are unfilled positions. That's one of the reasons why we have the surplus that we do. Those positions are still there. They just.
They're not filled.
They need a person to fill that space.
And, and, you know, the conversation that we have with Coral is, well, you know, we're, we're stretched pretty darn thin, and the challenge with special ed is, by law, we have to serve students. So even if we don't have the positions filled, we got to figure it out and scramble and serve students. So if we cut those positions, we'd be, we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot, because we, we'd be saying, yeah, we're okay with not having enough people to serve our students.
So those positions, though, even though they're not filled, those are still in this budget?
Yes, correct. Because we want to fill those positions.
Okay, okay.
So like, there were positions in last year, like this year's fiscal budget that were there that are not filled.
But they're still there.
They're still there. The money is there for them, but at the end of the year, that's going to go into the surplus.
We're actively, actively trying to fill those. We've got, I think, two para educators coming to the January 3rd board meeting already, two folks who are going to start in January.
I think we need to make that especially clear, that this budget is not cutting.
Right. There will be less people in some buildings, though.
Yeah.
Yes, because I think the public needs to hear that.
But the, the, I don't want to say essential, but, I mean, the ones that are there, the teachers, the one-on-ones, like, those are not being cut.
The locally funded people are not being cut.
No, no, no. Len?
And, and I, I speak from personal issues here. It, it has been difficult to find one-on-one aides for students who need them.
Oh, yeah.
And it's just, they're, they're not around. And, you know, so we're not cutting those positions, but we can't find people to fill those positions.
Yeah.
And, and that's the difficult part.
But I still think we need to make it clear that we are not cutting any positions with this budget.
No, no, I, I agree with you completely. My, my other point is, I think we need to make it clear that, you know, I read articles today that is blaming Phil Scott for the rising increase in education costs. I, I think we need to make it clear that particularly, the health thing makes me crazy.
Yep.
That the, the state legislature and the NEA decided that this is how they were going to work from now on. And it completely, completely takes away local control. We don't have any control over the increase in healthcare costs.
Yep.
And we can't negotiate it, because it's not part of what we can do. It's out of our hands. And, and I think that, and I'm going to push this, I, I think we as board members, because the state legislature isn't accepting the responsibility over the increase in healthcare. And they need to, because they made the deal.
Thanks, Len. Paul?
And just a comment from my experience, because we provide healthcare at my business, and people have the option to have the, the very best that's available from Blue Cross. And our increase, which was a hard one for us to swallow, but was still 4% less than what the state negotiated.
Oh, wow.
It seems to me that it must be a pretty fat plan, or, or they're not very good negotiators.
I don't think they tried to negotiate at all.
Fair enough.
So one, one statement, and then one question for Brian. On the healthcare thing, Brian did a great job summarizing for everybody publicly and here. Before we looked at the budget, we had $800,000 in increase before anybody here on finance or the school board touched it.
Yep.
That's one. And then a question, the language that we see as proposed ballot?
Yep.
I know January of this year, there was new language. Is this reflective of the new language?
That language, I am pretty sure we are safe with, because what changed was you don't have to put the per pupil increase anymore.
So the per pupil dollar is still a requirement, but not the percent effect?
Yeah, yeah, because the, the percentage swing is artificial, because new pupil waitings. So you could have a huge swing, and you did nothing, because they just changed the number of students you have, so.
We gained, like, at the end, by the, it was like, with the reduction, it was like 60 extra kids or something like that in our numbers.
That's because it's a five-year trend?
That is now, I think we, I asked Stan that question, if we had faded that out, so that's now completely gone.
Yep. The phantom students thing is no more. So, and here, that's great, thank you for bringing that up, Nick. My plan would be, and this is, this is a little bit contingent upon what the board does tonight, if the board, if the board approves this budget tonight, my plan would be on January 3rd, I bring you ballot language when we vote and we accept a ballot. So I call this draft language, because this is what I think will be pretty close to what it is, but I'll do a little bit of double-checking and crossing Ts and dotting Is before I bring it to the board. But that would be next step if we do approve a budget.
The other thing is, in the past, I know people, there were some people on the board that were uncomfortable voting before we knew what the CLA numbers are.
Oh, yes.
So that's, you know, another thing that's totally out of our control.
Yeah.
And most likely this year, we won't actually know the number before we could even, like, we, it is almost 100% likely that we will have to vote before the CLA number comes out.
They were hinting that it was going to be end of January.
So hopefully.
Likely that, and we have to have a budget before end of January.
And the other part of that.
If we didn't approve a budget tonight, we'd be scrambling to try and have something, maybe not on the 3rd, but a special meeting the week after. We'd have to do it that fast to have something ready for town meeting day. Sorry, Josh.
Oh, no, and my, you know, and, you know, it's just my personal thing of just like, if we change, if, I think I made this point last year, too, of just saying, the CLA shouldn't really affect, we can't control what's hap, who buys or sells houses in our communities. We can control what we can control, and it gets smaller every year, it seems like, within the budget.
And two-thirds of the increase, if we're looking at $800,000 that was out of our control, about 400,000 that we're saying, we'd like to do this, we're talking about two-thirds and one-third. So that 1% district tax rate increase, that 1%, we're only causing a third of that. Really, two-thirds of that was out of our control. So we're, we're really trying hard to look at what do our students need, and how do we best support our students first? And then looking at anything that we have, you know, what, what are the things within our control that we can try and be strategic and have a long-term plan to make sure that we're doing things in a way that don't have negative impacts on the community? I do want to be clear, and I, sorry, Len, one more thing I'll say. We are looking at what do our students need first, but then we're trying to be strategic about, well, how do we use our surplus in a way that supports not just what we want to do for our students, but the community, too? So we are trying to keep that in mind. Len?
Yeah, and again, this is going to sound repetitive, but, but, there was a Clarendon select board meeting the other night, and there was so much misinformation that it was unbelievable. And so I sent them an email, one of the members an email, and as Liz has mentioned before, we sent three of our legislators emails, and we haven't heard anything back from them. And so I, I, again, it, you, we folks need to talk to our select board and help them to understand, you know, there was a quote the other night, that, you know, the municipal part, they're working hard to, to lower costs, but the education part is, that's not true. Brian, you just got done saying it, and I agree completely. We're working hard to provide what's best for the kids. There's so much that are out of, that's out of our hands. People need to understand that.
You know, and if we were, if, you know, we can look at a 1% district tax rate increase, and we could say, well, if we did nothing here, it would be a, you know, two-thirds of a percent increase. You know, so it's hard for us to tip that square, scale too much, and then you kind of go like, well, if our students need more, is that really why we're not giving our students more? Because we want to see a two-thirds increase, not a 4% increase? And that, that just feels wrong to me. Keep going, Len. You're on a roll.
Here's another thing that came up, test scores. We're not, they're not using the same tests that they were last year, right?
Well, we, we had a brand-new test last year. Well, we had a brand-new test last year. So this year in the spring, in the spring, we can have a conversation around, hey, how are we doing? But.
They still use STAR 360.
And I guess that's like.
We do use STAR 360, and I can tell you how our students are doing there. Yeah, yeah.
It's like every other year, the state changes the parameters.
Yeah. And the things, you know, we look at STAR 360 locally because we, we know we need something to use that we can rely on and we can compare. But when the newspaper is talking about test scores, they're talking about our state assessments, yeah, which did change. And, and something you see in our budget here too is supporting the work that we've been doing to coordinate curriculum. You know, I think Jody's done a really good job of, of listening to teachers, and you've heard us. We've come to the board meeting and we've said things like, I know this bid is a higher bid, but our teachers are telling us that this is the program they need. You know, so we're trying to listen to our, our experts in the classroom, and we're trying to put that coordinated curriculum in place. But there's a cost to that, too. And the way I feel about it, if we are not doing a good job, if we are not being transparent, if, if people don't know what's happening and we're asking for more, people probably aren't going to give us more. If we're, if we're showing people what we're doing, if we're bringing teachers in and letting teachers share about, here are how things are going, here's what I think about that program, if the program's working or not. If, if we are working in a way that people trust us when we ask for more, you know, to sustain this curriculum, it's not, I think it's an easier question because we've been talking about these curriculum materials, you know, how many meetings over the last year and a half, you know? It's not something out of the blue and we go, oh, yeah, by the way, we need money for this. You know, it's been an ongoing conversation.
I think another big point, like, that is really, really easy to miss because we do not control property values.
No.
We can control what our tax rate is. And so like, one of the nice things that we did in the finance committee is, you know, in some of the summary stuff, we actually looked back and said like, okay, what was our tax rate? So like, in 2020, it was 1.59. In 2021, it was 1.6, went up a little bit. Then 1.55, 1.38, 1.36, and then this year, I estimate, 1.37. So that sounds like we're being pretty fiscally responsible. We're not like that, our district tax rate isn't going up. CLA has gone way up, and what your property value is, has gone up. So that 1.3 is different than, you know, what it was maybe five years ago, but it's like, so we are making the attempt.
And I think we're trying to be clear about what we're doing. And, and if folks don't think we're doing a good job, you know, we're giving lots of opportunities along the way, I think, to get that feedback, you know, getting feedback on the budget. This is the second year we've, we've done that, and I think it's served us well. We have things coming to the table that aren't things that I dreamed up, or things that any of us dreamed up. They're things that started with, with input from staff and community members. So I think that's.
And I think to that point, so one of the new, so just to talk about like the new positions briefly. So the elementary world language teacher, in finance, we kind of were trying to figure out how feasible that actually is because it was a program that existed in the past. It got, it was part of budget cuts that got, got rid of. We also talked about, what is the home sciences or, you know?
Oh, family and consumer sciences.
Sciences as a potential other position. Both of those positions felt like there were things that are very challenging with them and things that are, you know, like finding a particular person for both of those positions is kind of tricky. We decided to go for this year for the world language teacher and have Brian start researching and looking into the new position to see if it's something that we could offer within scheduling. And then the other part of it is, is saying, we need to have teacher feedback, we need to have parent feedback to show that this new position is worth continuing on and moving forward with. The same thing for the alternative program because I was uncomfortable with creating a space that kids can get, fall through cracks and get left behind. And so making sure that, you know, we're, we're getting feedback at board meetings about what's happening in the class and things like that.
But I think just like, just like woodshop, you know, woodshop didn't just disappear. You know, we brought Ed back specifically to try and check in with how things are going. And if things are going well, great, sustain the program. If things aren't going well, then you go, maybe, maybe this was something that people thought was going to have an impact that it didn't. And that's fair. That's absolutely fair. And I mean, that's how we approach our work. We're going to do the best research we can and have the best plan we can. We're going to try something, and if it doesn't work, we're not, we're not going to stick to our guns and pretend it's working and fight when people tell us it's not. We're going to go, oh, it's not working. Let's try something better. So, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out, Josh.
And I think, oh, sorry, you can go ahead.
I just have a question on the alternative program teacher. I want to know just a little bit more about that. So is that for kids who, like, just the general population? Or is that program, that somebody who's going to be working with kids on IEPs? Is that for the kids who can't be in a classroom that are being disruptive and they just need to go to a separate space? Like, what is that?
Because it is local funded, that is a program that could serve any kids, which I think is very important. It could be that that's where a student is having their IEP services, could be. Could be a student who is just struggling in the mainstream classroom for whatever reason. Could be that a class of 20 kids just isn't working for that kid. So when they get in a class of maybe eight, they might be doing better if they have somewhere where the, the teacher can give them a little more individual attention. This would, this would be something that would typically be not, it's not like, hey, you're in here for a week. It would be, okay, this is your semester. This is where you're doing your math. Bruce, question?
Yeah, I've got a question too. Is the alternative, I, we used to do alternative at after-school during the weeks.
Yep, yep.
Years ago.
Yep.
You had the actual English teacher, math teacher, science teacher, teaching parts of the curriculum they didn't understand.
Yep.
So is this alternative teacher going to have his own curriculum that alternative students can pass in lieu of the other curriculum?
Yeah, this.
Or is the alternative teacher supposed to be working with teachers?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And it's going to be more of, and I know Jody's going to chime in here in a second, I think. It's, it's going to be more of, there's a curriculum that we need to get through. And the curriculum might be modified for that student, but it's still going to be, you're, you're not taking your English class, you're doing English here. Jody, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, so I just want to state like, so it's still our practice and would be our practice in this alternative program that a licensed area teacher would have to oversee any curriculum in an alternative placement. And so what that would look like is, the goal is that there would be a teacher with the students all day long that truly understands trauma and harm practice and alternative ways of teaching for kids who are not being successful, but the curriculum they're being provided, if, let's say that teacher had a endorsement in social studies, they could provide that social studies lesson, but for the other major subject areas, they would have to have curricular oversight by somebody in that endorsement area.
And something, something I think that Kalen has done a good job of, she's, she's shifted department heads' job responsibilities a little bit this year. And so I could be wrong, but I believe the plan is that department chairs are actually, that's part of their responsibility as a department chair. It's a stipended position. So they are going to be working with this individual as needed if a student needs curriculum that the individual is not specifically licensed to deliver, if that makes sense.
Will there be a written curriculum for this particular student that he can look at and parents can look at? It's okay, this is what he's got to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
The same in any other class, there would be a syllabus.
Yeah. Yeah, we started requiring syllabus for every class, was it two years ago, Jody? Two years ago. So any class that runs, there should be that syllabus, which, which I think is important to be able to provide to people. Good questions. Thank you, Bruce.
Right. I'm curious, one of the things mentioned about why there is a surplus budget that shows up is unable to hire a few paraeducator positions? Is that, is that something that we're seeing regionally, or is this a challenge for the Mill River District?
Oh, it's everywhere.
I think, yeah, and I think paraeducators unfortunately historically have been a high turnover position, just period. We, we never used to see staffing shortages for certified teachers. We're now seeing shortages for certified teachers. So where paraeducator staffing was always a little bit harder, that's gotten worse, you know? Does that, does that help? And I think that's a national trend, just teachers leaving the workforce. We're, it's a little compounded for us because we're a rural area.
Is it, is this something that we can be working with CCV or Castleton for some kind of like funneling?
You know, we've been talking with Castleton. We host a lot of their student teachers. And we've been talking with Castleton a little bit about, okay, there's an existing program for student-teacher placements. Is there a way that we could make that a more robust program? You know, because right now, it's, you sign up for your placement, you come out here and you have your placement. And, yeah, sometimes that turns into students who, who go, hey, I just graduated. I've got my credentials. Yeah, I'll, I'll work there. I know that place. But we, our hope is that we could turn that into an experience where they're a little more integrated into the school, not just, I did my student teaching, I'm done. So we've started some of those conversations with Castleton. You know, we're, we're trying to do what we can to, at our last leadership team meeting, we handed out like color flyers with the little tear, tear a number off, like, go post these anywhere you go publicly. That's got a bulletin board. You know, we're, we're trying to think of any possible way we can to get the word out and recruit any, anywhere. That, I think, is going to be our biggest challenge as a district for the next several years. I think staffing is it. I, you know, we can talk about students, student behaviors coming out of COVID, being escalated. I'm more worried about staffing because we can't support those students if we don't have staffing. So, yeah, students need more support than they used to. We can handle that if we have the staffing, you know, so.
And it's like, so rural in general is tougher. And then we also have this conundrum that's a tight housing market. So how are you going to bring in a new teacher if they literally can't find a place to live? You know, so it's like, so then your pool gets a little bit smaller.
And you go, well, where are the places in the state where, you know, well, there's, never mind. There's nowhere in the state where housing isn't hard. But then you start looking at other states, I guess, you know, so.
All right. So are we at the point where we want to vote on this?
Any other discussion, questions, comments, thoughts?
Just like the big picture of like, so for the past two years, people have spoken out about things that they wanted to see. Last year, it was like sports, field improvements, physical, you know, stuff improvement. People came to meetings and things changed. This year, we had similar types of things where people were outspoken. So if people are griping to you, tell them, you know, come to those finance meetings, come to those community meetings because like, we will actively respond to it, you know?
I would gladly say it on record again. The four or five people that I regularly speak to are fantastic. It's the other 500 that I don't hear from?
I know.
Fair enough.
All right. So all in favor of putting this verbiage on the ballot? In March?
Are we voting on the, we're not.
Oh, no, wait, never mind.
Budget. The verbiage will be next.
Verbiage, yeah.
So.
This language for the budget.
Motion to adopt the FY25 budget as presented.
There we go.
That is the motion.
Okay. All in favor? I can't see.
Yep, I see three.
I know three.
All right, we're good.
Excellent. And huge, huge thanks.
Too late, Lynn.
To the finance committee. You can't stop, Lynn. What do you, what do you got?
No, it's never, it's never too late. I just want to thank the members of the finance committee for the work that they've done.
Yes.
Agreed.
And I really appreciate everybody working very hard, and Brian, you as well. But, you know, I think the finance committee has done a great job.
And huge kudos to Liz, who, who chairs that up. Liz couldn't be here because there were, she had a conflict. But Liz has, you know, for years, done a lot to dive in and figure out a really complex, challenging thing and done a real good job keeping us, the committee, on track.
Yeah. And Lynn, thanks for jumping in like pretty late, and I think you contributed a lot. So I appreciate it.
So I will fully admit that I was at community engagement tonight, and apparently I'm not on that committee. So, hey, if you need me anywhere, let me know. All right. So personnel, we are on to community reports, and personnel do have.
Okay. I just have one thing. Obviously, we didn't have a personnel committee meeting tonight. Our next meeting is in January. But I do have a bus driver that I would like to move, that we got order, that we offer a contract to Yvonne Paranello as a bus driver. Period.
Is it full-time?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Lovely.
Sweet, jeez.
Did you make the motion?
You did.
I'll second that.
Starting January 1st and ending June 12th.
And this is somebody who we know, she had been a sub-driver for us a little bit periodically last year. And it's worked out that she can be a full-time driver for us now, which is awesome.
She was also a paraeducator.
Yeah, she was a para at Clarendon.
She's fantastic.
All right. So we have Cindy second in.
Oh, okay.
Yep. All in favor? Sweet. Okay. Thank you. Okay, yeah, next meeting is the first board meeting in January.
One, three. One, three. Do you want to do a 6:30 meeting or a 6 o'clock meeting, Lynn? I don't remember that conversation.
6:30 should be fine.
Okay.
I don't think we have a whole heck of a lot.
No, we'll have a few contracts. We will.
Yeah. Well, I want to, let's set it up for 6 because I want to do the superintendent evaluation as well.
Okay.
Okay. So now we're on to policy. Oh, Lordy, bear with me.
Oh, it's easy this week. Only first readings.
Okay, so I, you say that. I make a motion to send B1, which is currently D1. We're changing, this is our reorganizing of the things. So it's the policy of personal recruitment, selection, appointment, and background checks for first read. This is basically to move it from D1.
It's all first read.
I think so.
Okay.
They're all first read.
Okay.
Yeah. And they're all doing the same thing.
They're all, okay.
We're not adding anything or doing.
So all of them that I'm saying, we're moving them to Bs, from Ds to Bs. So I make a motion to send B1, B2, B4, and B5 out for first read.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Just a general narrative of just saying, we're moving, all of these are personnel things, and all the personnel policies will be in B. The only slight, some might have been slight changes based on an updated DSPA policy, but there is no like fundamental changes in the policies.
Yeah. I don't think there was that much.
Nope, these are all pretty basic.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. Next policy meeting is, hold on. January 9th at 5:30. And now we're on to buildings and grounds. Matt is apparently not coming.
And I can give quick, quick Tin Myth update, and then Josh and Paul, who else is? Okay.
Doug and Matt.
Okay. So Josh and Paul, you two can maybe handle that. The Tin Myth quick update is, the last thing we're looking at is this. The Tin Myth quick update is, the last thing we're looking at is asbestos testing, and that was done today, actually. Um, we, we were under the impression that some of that was getting done on their end, and we found out that it wasn't getting done, so we said, fine, we'll get it done, um, and we, that was a Monday conversation of, oh, it's not getting done, okay, well, we'll get it in place, and we got it tested today. Uh, so we'll, we'll see if we get a result back that there's no asbestos, life is good, things will be in place, and I'll bring you a lease to sign on the 3rd of January, or a lease to approve us to sign. Uh, if we get a test back that says there's asbestos, the, the mitigation of that might take a little bit, um, it's not gonna be a scenario where it's, we're taking up the floor and we're redoing the floor, it's gonna be a scenario of, we have a place to patch where the tile has come up, but it still needs to be done appropriately, so if there is asbestos, it's not necessarily a huge project, but because you have to get somebody certified to do it the appropriate way, uh, that might delay us a month or something like that, so we're, fingers crossed that we get a test back with no asbestos.
All right. Are we gonna do more B and G proposals, or we've already done that?
Josh?
Josh.
Yeah, those are, that was what, the, the, that hoop is the one we've talked about. Um, just generally in the board meeting, we're still, we're still really trying to figure out exactly what the five-year plan looks like, finalizing this budget helps figuring out what that's gonna look like, voting's gonna finish it. Um, some of the other, like, Kim came in and talked about some other sports stuff, like the bleachers and other projects that aren't super immediate, but we're talking about as the five-year plan. There's-
Shrewsbury Heat, I think, is one of the ones that, the system's really old, and you should probably-
Yeah, there's two separate systems in Shrewsbury, there's the gym, like, area has its one that's the oldest, and then they did have a, they had to do an early release, but that was just for some maintenance that didn't go great, pretty much, and then they couldn't, it was cold out, so the, the fume levels were too high in some of the classrooms. Trying to think if there was any other, like, big thing that's worth talking about here yet, but.
Ah, Leach-
We did talk about the heating plant there at the-
Yeah.
Yep, how that was going and, and getting that all wrapped up.
There are still difficulties with it.
Was, was Leach Field in septic, that was on the list for high school too, and there's, I think there's a plumbing piece in the high school, that's one that is gonna become problematic if we don't tackle it, maybe in a year or so?
Yeah, and so, yeah, and those were the ones that were like, there were, you know, you hate to have to be a broken record, but problems that existed in pre-
Were not dealt with.
That were not dealt with, and certain ones, if our Leach Field fails, which last year there was a septic problem that had, the tank failed, so that cost a bunch of money, this year, well, it needs to get replaced, ideally this summer, and then in the mezzanine, there's some pipes-
The one, yeah.
That if they go, there's a, there's a small asbestos-
You're gonna flood a lot of the building, and that's not okay.
Probably ruin the gym floor, and so that's one of those things that, we probably will see a proposal for that sooner than later in the full board. I don't think we set, did we set another meeting time, Paul? But it wouldn't be before the next board meeting anyway.
And Shrewsbury Playground, I think, was on the list too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, there's like some key ones that we were, when we were talking about them, we're like, what on this list are actually like safety things? Or if they fail, it's a catastrophic problem that makes the price go way, way up. And so those will be prior, priorities for this year, um, hopefully a lot of it getting done.
So, so what the full board should, I think, the good news is that we have gotten far enough along that not only do we have a five-year plan, but we're engaging with that plan in a way that we're trying to set priorities, and look at the funding that we have, and looking out to the future, the funding that we, we might have if the budget passes, and you're gonna start seeing proposals coming from the B and G group probably more frequently. So we, we had some catch-up work of figuring out, you know, what was even on the plan? Well, now we're there, and we've got the first priority, and you'll be seeing the next priority probably soon in, in, you know, February-ish or so. So I think that's good, good for folks to be aware of, that we're rolling on that in a good way now.
Good.
Yeah, it's one of those things, we have, every meeting where we find out something, we're like, oh.
Yay!
That's interesting.
Yep, well, and, and-
Makes you wanna just have a party every meeting.
And I think it's important that we don't, uh, that building fund, that we set that money aside in, I think there's always the danger of, well, who's making the decisions? And how, how, you know, is one school getting funded more than another school? I think having board representation from several communities, having those conversations, there, there was some, there were one or two things from each school on the list, and the five-year plan has tons of things for each school, so I think, uh, having some public conversations about the work that needs to be done keeps us doing it in a way that's supporting all our schools.
And I think it's a credit to Tim too, that it is like, I, I just don't think the board knew a lot of this stuff, because it was actively not being talked about before. And I think now it's actively being talked about.
And we're not gonna go use that building fund money for something if we're not talking with the board, so, so you know what you have there, and you can sort through those priorities, and Tim's gonna be transparent and tell you, hey, this is a problem, um, if it is, so I think that's good.
And you said you have no meeting next?
I don't think we said, I don't have my notes from that meeting, so I don't-
Okay, that's fine.
I don't remember if we said it, I didn't put it in my calendar.
Okay, that's all right. All right, community engagement.
Uh, we had a great meeting tonight, um, we are 50% of the way through our winter newsletter, uh, which will be the first of a recurring newsletter, uh, which we hope to publish three to four times a year. Uh, next meeting is scheduled for January the 17th at 6 o'clock.
All right, negotiations?
We have our-
Yep, we, uh, we, we as a committee did not meet, but we did sit down with the association representatives and set ground rules, and we set some dates for future meetings, so that ball is rolling, and we'll let you know when we have more. The, the next meeting that we have with the association is on the 4th of January.
January 4th.
Um, so actually, that's, that's a good reminder, if we wanna meet, we need to warn a meeting prior to that, so I will, I'll connect with the committee, and we'll talk about if we wanna do that or not.
Okay.
Okay, um, finance, are you?
I have pay orders, yeah, I can read those, I can read those.
And I know she sent something out asking if somebody could do it for her.
Okay, so finance, you got, you got the update from the committee meeting already. We do have pay orders here, I have a payroll warrant, so, uh, FY24 regular payroll warrant in the amount of $599,923.03. We've got insurance, health insurance buybacks in the amount of $63,784.29. Another regular payroll warrant in the amount of $12,001.81. Another regular in the amount of $895.75, that totals to $676,000? Sorry, let me do that again, $676,604.88 for payroll warrants. So motion to accept that as read?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that.
Any questions, discussions? All right, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Uh, now I've got the pay orders, so from the general fund in the amount of $410,949.52. Another general fund in the amount of $15,682.6. After-school program, the amount of $743.70, and lunch program, $61,185.86, for a total of $488,561.14. Then we've got one student activity, uh, account here for Mill River in the amount of $3,941.64, oh, sorry, and one, a student activity from Wallingford, the amount of $90, for a total of $4,031.64 for student activities. Motion to approve as read?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor? All right, thank you very much, um-
We don't have a next finance meeting, we don't, actually, I think we were waiting to see what happened tonight, so we'll probably connect and, and go from there. It, it's probably likely that we don't have a quick need for one, so we probably won't have a quick turnaround, we might have something early February if we see a need for one. Uh, we may not meet until after town meeting day, actually, um, 'cause if we've got our stuff set for town meeting day.
Okay. Um, is there any other legal business we need to discuss? All right, agenda building for our January 3rd meeting.
Vote on the wording.
Language, yes. Uh, we would have Mill River groups come in again on the schedule.
Okay.
Uh, ELA and, let me check, ELA and Global Citizenship.
Um, can we put Tin Myth back on there?
Uh, Tin Myth update, yep.
Yeah, because hopefully we have the asbestos back.
We should know something by then, absolutely.
Okay.
And I'm either bringing you a lease or I'm bringing you an update.
Yep.
Uh, I do also have our restraint, seclusion, special ed intervention pre-K on that night, but actually, uh, now that I'm looking at this, that, looks like that might make that a bigger meeting if we have our school group too.
Yeah, let's not.
Yeah, because I have progress on goals or a board education one too, we had wanted to work that on kind of quarterly. Uh, the ballot, I think the budget was the big one, the ballot's gonna be easy now that we have the budget, ELA, social studies will be a chunk of time, I think we could do one or the other, we could do our restraint, seclusion, special ed intervention pre-K update, and wait to do progress on board goals January 17, or we could do our, check in on our board goals and then wait and do our special ed intervention pre-K on the 17th.
Let's do that, just because, um, we should be able to have an update on like our community engagement piece, which-
We're, we're hoping to have something ready-
You know, and that would be good timing to go, okay, if that's been a priority, okay, where do we put our efforts next? Yeah, yeah, no, I think that makes sense. Anything we're missing? Okay.
Now, can we have, um, it doesn't necessarily need to be an agenda, but a thought about the hoops, if we get a date?
Oh, yeah, just an update of how that's going?
Now that we've approved, yeah, if he gives us a date for like, the end of January or something.
Yeah, the, the baseball ones, right?
Yeah, the baseball nets.
Yeah, and Kim might already actually know that, that date already, I'm pretty sure she told us, uh-
I was gonna say, I'm, I thought Matt had told me, like, if they could approve it by here, like, it was super quick.
That's, that's what I, I just didn't write it down in my-
Here's what I might do, I might just get that update and send you an email, so that you know.
Oh, yeah, that can work.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking.
No, that's, that's great.
I definitely wanna know about that though, considering we have, we're in full swing for basketball season.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I know she was talking about January, but I don't remember the exact day.
Okay, I'll, I'll check and I'll send you an email on that.
Okay, um, good meeting. Yep, and we're back here.
Len, you got something?
Great.
Yeah, just talking about Kim's sport, she had said something to me a while ago-
Oh, no, thank you.
About the basketball, the, the court-
Yeah.
At the river-
Yep.
Needing to be replaced.
Because we're running out of how many times we can sand it.
Is that what, the main?
Yep, yep.
Can we just, oh, we refinish it?
But I'm glad you said that, Len, though, because Kim has got, Kim's on the agenda for January, so we'll have a sports update for the 3rd, so thank you, that jogged my memory. But that's something that's gotta be on that five-year plan, absolutely, we've talked about that, we might be able to refinish it one more time, and then next time it's gonna be a lot more expensive.
That's on the buildings.
Paul?
We did talk about it, and it is on the plan.
Okay.
And it's in the out heaters, I mean, it's not-
Yeah.
This year or the year after, but it's coming.
Okay, yeah, good to be aware of before we get there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
That, I think that's, yeah.
Okay.
Everybody good with all of? All right.
I, I have no need for executive session.
Yeah, do we have? All right, then we are adjourned at, well, adjourned by consensus-
By consensus, yep.
At 8:46.